Water please rise. We have a moment of silence to keep our troops and our law enforcement and our thoughts, that they come home safe. Thank you. Swoon to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
...
All call.
Fielder Armwood.
Here.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Coppel.
Here.
Fielder Nara.
Here.
Fielder Tamara.
Here.
Fielder Valenti.
Here.
Fielder Director Rios.
Here. Have some recognitions?
Yes, first, if recognizing the schools or participating in the Make Foods Food Drive, next, if you're claiming your head, elder abuse awareness, awareness month of those acts, time is nice to recognize and let these information center.
This time you will have Fielder Valente and Fielder Tamara as well will be making the presentation along with our intended process. I'm sorry, you know what, we have to have a motion and adoption before we, uh, make the president. Motion by Fielder Valente, second by Fielder Tamara, roll call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Coppel.
Yes.
Fielder Nara.
Yes.
Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti.
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios.
Yes.
Good evening. My food's a Snelsus County network of more than 100 food pantry soup kitchens and social service agencies that provide nutritious foods to county residents in need. My food provides non-perishable foods, shrimp, produce, dairy, and meat products twice a week. My food also provides agency for networking opportunities, resource tools, and official guidelines for clients, as well as allocating for programs and policies to help out hunger and poverty. My food partners with the community food bank of New Jersey and many local business groups, clubs, individuals, and schools who sponsor food drives to keep our shelves stocked with healthy foods. In 2016, my food received and distributed over 1.5 million pounds of food. The annual spring school food drive is the largest annual food drive to benefit my food each year. This year, 128 schools participated and donated over 48 pounds of food. These contributions help see us through these storm months when donations typically fall off and needs increase. This evening, we will be recognizing some of the top collecting schools for this year's spring school food drive, as well as other youth organizations and schools that also had exceptional collections. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Jennifer Apostle, who's a dynamic director of my food.
Happy evening. I'd first like to recognize the Old Bridge High School Junior ROTC. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight, but they were our top collecting school. Over 100 cadets participated in the food drive this past fall. They partnered with several local retailers to collect food throughout the community. In all, they filled over 136 of Army Foods containers. With their extraordinary efforts, over 6,800 pounds of food was collected this year by them. So we thank them for their efforts. I'd like to invite up now members from the East Brunswick Cub Scouts from Troops 132 and 223, if they're here. Not sure they were able to make it. Well, doesn't look like they're here, but I would like to recognize the fact that they held the food drive outside several local grocery stores on November 5th and 6th, and through their effort, we received 5,500 pounds of food and over $1,000 monetary contributions. Both these troops will also be volunteering with us to help with set up and cleanup of a hunger awareness event we'll be having on June 10th called Dime Below the Line. So we're very grateful for their involvement and support of our program. Next, I'd like to invite Christine Spatola and Jennifer Bosel, who are the council moderators from Wobbie School in Old Bridge to come up. They collected over 5,000 pounds of food through their Super Bowl themed collection coordinated by the student council. They hold the drive the weeks before and after the actual Super Bowl and have a competition between classrooms. The top five classes received recognition on the loudspeaker speaker, and every student from the top three classes received a spirit stick, and the top four in each class received spirit sticks. I'd like to invite representatives from the JP Stevens FCC LA to come up.
My alma mater.
The FCC LA club sponsored two food drives this past fall and donated a total of 4,650 pounds of food. In September, they held the food drive at JP Stevens High School with the homeroom competition, and the FCC LA made a hot breakfast for the first and second place homeroom students. On November 21st, the collection was held at the NJ FCC LA Fall Leadership Connections at the Science Matter. All participating schools brought donations, and the schools with the most donations were recognized. We also received a $500 grant award that received recognition of the JP Stevens FCC LA Lead to Feed Student Leadership Program Challenge project that was related to their food drives in support of Make Foods. Thank you so much. Are you guys from the East Brunswick Scouts? Okay, we just skipped you guys, but you can come up and get your certificate. Next, I'd like to ask the representative from the Nora Ull in Mon School of South Brunswick to come up. Their school donated 4,000 pounds of food. They had a community service club was created, created a food drive committee to organize the food drive. They created a theme for the food drive, NUI Going for 5,000, where their goal was to collect 5,000 items. They encouraged every student to try to bring in 10 items to help meet their goal, and the class with the highest aggregate number of items won a pizza party. And the social services teacher offered extra credit to students who brought in items and wrote a description of what it meant to the students to help out the community. Thank you so much.
Director.
Yes.
On my first one, I'm just going to say this. Mrs. Katavec and I are childhood best friends.
But you were crammed. Next, we're going to recognize Colonial High School. I don't believe they could be here tonight, but they did donate 3,900 pounds of food, which is actually only half the amount of total food that they collected. The other half was donated to a local food pantry. The Interact Club sponsored their food drive and ran a competition between homerooms. We thank them. Next, I'd like to ask Principal Paravalo and Mrs. Lewandowski from the Touch High School to come up. They donated a total of 3,100 pounds of food. They had a battle of the classes food drive competition in the fall, and in March, coinciding with our spring school food drive, they held a Pi Day food drive where the theme was to collect circular items like cans and Cheerios. Many thanks to Mrs. Lewandowski for her longstanding dedication and commitment toward the community and encouraging students to participate in food drives over here. We very much appreciate them. Next, we're going to recognize the East Brunswick High School football team, who also could not be here tonight, but we'd like to recognize their efforts under the leadership of Coach Mollars and player Timmy Goodzak. The team holds an annual food drive every July. The timing of their collection is critical for our food, as the summer is the most difficult time of year to keep our shelves stocked. Team members pass out flyers and bags in their neighborhoods. The flyer indicates when the boys will be back to pick up their contribution. All the donations received from the community are brought back to the locker room or picked up by Make Foods. We received 2,750 pounds of food thanks to their efforts and the generosity of the East Brunswick community. South Brunswick High School is also not here tonight, but we want to recognize the fact that they donated 2,500 pounds of food to Make Foods and an equal amount to the South County Township Food Pantry. The food drive is sponsored by the Viking Leadership Alliance Group. Students go outside several local grocery stores on a busy day in the weekend and collect donations from patrons. We should say, school in East Brunswick also is not here, but through their fall drive, we received 2,450 pounds of food. St. Helena and Edison's also not here, but they had the classroom competitions and dust down days, contributed 2,050 pounds of food during our spring school food drive. The AC Redshaw School in New Brunswick couldn't be here either, but they collected 2,000 pounds of food during the spring school food drive. The principal made daily announcements about the food drive and encourages every student to bring in at least one item. I'd like to ask Jessica Ballinton, student council advisor from Linwood Middle School, to come up. I guess she couldn't make it, but the student council sponsored a fall food drive and they donated 2,000 pounds of food. The Scadaway High School couldn't be here, but their key club members sponsored the spring food drive and donated 2,000 pounds of food. I'm not sure if anybody's here from the Von E. Longer Middle School of Middlesex, but they, their school was able to donate 1,750 pounds during our spring food drive. I know that no one could be here from the Erwin Elementary School in East Brunswick tonight, but they donated 1,650 pounds of food during our spring school food drive, and they decided to hold another food drive right after the end of May, and they were able to donate another 1,000 pounds of food during that collection. Their school nurse Lily Ladman has been the driving force behind the multiple food drives the school sponsors every year. Mrs. Ladman is retiring this year, and we're very grateful for her dedication and support, and will miss her support. Old Tree Elementary School in Monroe couldn't be here, but they were able to donate 1,600 pounds of food during our spring food drive. Will Maya and Andjali from the Middlesex County Academy for Science, Math, and Engineering Technology please come up? These students represent the Red Cross and Interact Clubs who co-sponsored the spring food drive. Through their efforts, 1,500 pounds of food were donated. The Dr. Herbert N. Richardson School couldn't be represented tonight, however, the students were able to donate 1,500 pounds of food. I'd like to invite these some more from the Randolphville School to come on up. I know their principal encourages student participation in many ways, including classroom competitions and an activity that involves using donated items to learn about food lately, and they were also able to donate 1,500 pounds of food. So that wraps up our recognition for this evening. I'd like to offer a final thank you to everyone who supports the Make Foods program, no matter how large or small. Each and every contribution makes a tremendous difference. This program has a major impact on the lives of so many Middlesex County residents. We are not only providing food, the most basic of needs, but we are also providing encouragement and support to those who need it most. Many pantries in our network also offer services, including clothing, rent, or utility assistance, and referrals for other major service programs. Through the Make Foods Network, our agencies are collaborating together to share information and resources to most effectively and efficiently meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. So in closing, I thank all the volunteers who worked tirelessly to provide these much-needed services, and to those in our community who give so generously to help us ensure Middlesex County residents have access to nutritious foods and necessities at all times. Stay informed about Make Foods and our partner agencies and how you can get involved, please follow us on our social media pages. Thank you.
I would also like to thank all those that participated in the food drives throughout the county, has definitely made an impact on people's lives, as Jennifer Apostle said. And I want to thank Jennifer and her staff for your hard work and dedication as well. I would give you the opportunity, for those that got recognized here for your support in the Make Foods drive, if you want to leave, you can leave because our meeting will continue on, so if you want to take a one-minute recess, you basically may not want to exit at this time or any time, but it's an opportunity to time now.
And then when they say JP Stevens, I was like, that's definitely her.
Okay, our respondents.
Each fielder has been provided with a correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. His correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk for work to write.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion.
Motion by Fielder Valente, second by Fielder Tamara, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion to adjourn, minutes for approval?
We have chosen fielder in regular meeting, May 18, 2017, as a, uh, as a, uh, nominee.
Motion to accept? By Fielder Valente, second by Fielder Tamara, roll call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Coppel.
Yes.
Fielder Nara.
Yes.
Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti.
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios.
Yes. Ordances. Interruption in the first reading, the clerk will read ordinance number 17-002 by Ty Long.
Guarantee ordinance 17-002, security of the county improvement authorities, county guarantee capital, and improvement revenue bond series, 2017, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million.
Motion to adopt, number 17-002 by Ty Long. Motion by Fielder Valente, second by Fielder Tamara, roll call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Coppel.
Yes.
Fielder Nara.
Yes.
Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti.
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios.
Yes. Of course, the freeholders, Fielder Ken Armwood.
No.
Fielder Leslie Coppel.
I think, Director, my report today is about our bonding, and it's a critical part of the county's comprehensive long-term financial strategy, has been taking advantage of historically low interest rates in order to refinance as much old debt as possible. Deal debt carries higher interest rates. During the past five years, the county refinanced nearly all of our eligible debt. The only remaining debt for refinancing of less than $465,000 comprises of the 2009 certificates of participation bonds. Our plan was to refinance the debt in November of 2016, however, at that time, higher interest rates caused the savings to fall below the 3% state required threshold. On May 18, taking advantage of recently improved partnership conditions, the county completed the refinancing of favorable interest rates of 2.33%, and the total debt service savings of this bond refunding sale are $750,000. This latest bond sale, the county will have saved taxpayers over $13 million from refunding old bonds over the past five years.
Thank you, Fielder Coppel. Fielder Tamara.
Thank you, Director, and, um, I apologize for the kind of summary loss. This is a report from the Department of Public Safety and Health. The department's hazardous materials response unit, known as Hazmat, responds to an excess of 350 calls annually. These responses include roadway accidents where hazardous materials are spilled and chemical flares and unknown substances are reported. In an effort to quicken the unit's response, the department, in collaboration with local municipalities, developed and implemented an automatic dispatch response system. Previously, the local municipality would respond to the scene, assess the situation, and then notify Hazmat that their assistance was required. Under this new policy, once established response protocols are triggered, the Hazmat unit is immediately dispatched in concert with that town's first responders. This new notification procedure expedites the unit's response, thereby eliminating delays and allows for a quicker cleanup of these hazardous situations. As mosquito season approaches, residents are reminded to take some easy basic steps in curbing the breeding of these nasty pests. Residents are advised to remove areas of standing water on your property, as these are environments where female mosquitoes lay their eggs. Standing water in buckets, tires, clogged roof gutters, and the like are all breeding grounds for these insects. Make sure your window and door screens are tight fitting, and don't have any holes where these insects may enter your home. For additional information or if you have any questions, visit the county's website or contact the mosquito commission at 732-549-0665. And I can attest that there've been a number of residents who have already reached out to me and to the department, and I've heard some positive responses that they, that the mosquito commission got back to them and is, are implementing some protocols in whatever towns they reside in. So that's my report for tonight, Director, thank you.
Thank you, Fielder Tamara. Fielder Deputy Director Charlie Tamara.
Thank you, Director. Some reports on the plays in the park, because Charlie's not here at the hour. Plays in the park will begin on June, Wednesday, June 21st, with our new start time at 8:00 P.M., so don't show up at 8:30, because it is the first day of that one. Play is legally planned, it's going to be great fun, runs through July 1st. Check out the county website for more information, including audio description, audio captioning, and sign language interpretation. The Middlesex County Trio does round the ball for complimentary admission to the summer musicals to act with the U.S. military service members and their needs families. Please present proper ID when picking up tickets. Veterans and hidden heroes will also be offered complimentary admission for shows on Monday, June 26th, and Tuesday, June 27th. Check out our website, the Cole Park Office for more information, at 732-745-3936. And also, Wilbur Township will be having a 12th Month of Madness campaign on Wednesday, June 7th. We meet at 5:30 at the Gudet Park, it's in May Street, entrance, entrance to our freeway in Edison, and the Wolf Stock starts at 6:00 P.M. That's my report, Director.
Thank you, Fielder Tamara. Fielder Monquita Valente.
Thank you, Director. Middlesex County recently held a second round of comprehensive, intensive training for mental health officers. This comprehensive five-day training for emergency signs to improve local law enforcement and mental health systems, response to community residents experiencing psychiatric distress. Officers from nine municipalities participated in the training, along with several behavioral health programs, including Rutgers, BHP, IQ psychiatric services, and Justice Involved Services, Legacy IOC, and Mammy, New Jersey. The CIT training provides classroom instruction, resource information sharing, community site visits, and practical exercises. CIT training provides participants with the knowledge and skills to, one, make people with mental illness with appropriate community-based supports and services; second, reduce injury; and third, promote public safety for all of the county's citizens, including law enforcement officers and people impacted by its behavioral health challenges. So that's my report, Director.
Thank you, Fielder Valente. Okay, Mr. Kelsall, any resolutions to be, or not? Any resolutions to be amended? Or not? Any resolutions to be held? Or not? Any resolutions to be written? Or not? At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions that are listed on them. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Could you name, I am Daniel Lima. I don't live in Middlesex County, however, I have worked in, in New Brunswick since 2011. I also am a graduate of Rutgers. I appreciate the work that you have been doing regarding the revised May 24th policy on ICE. I support the resolution, however, there are some concerns that I have. The policy is duvet when describing the role of the insurance department. Under section 2B, a states that assures officers to assist if, and I quote, "there's a nexus to criminal activity and/or assistance in the immediate interest of public safety." This statement is mainly to unwarranted incidents, like the one that occurred on March 31st. What does nexus to criminal activity specifically mean?
Excuse me, can I just interrupt you a second?
Yeah.
You're looking at version next and modified. For the members of the public, there are copies of the most current version, which was reviewed just before this meeting in closed session. We made copies to be available to all of you. The, but again, the, the specific reference to nexus to criminal activity has been replaced with other language.
Can I suggest, if somebody could just take the file and pass it out?
It was, it was here, not quite easily.
That's because we were in closed session, sir, and you were reviewing it, making sure that that's the one. Yeah, that's why it was just made available.
Okay. And, but then I have another option. So here I do see that you have in the immediate interest of public safety. So in terms, so what does immediate interest of public safety actually mean? And this could be clarified that the section 1A, we actually put in criminal activity activity in, and then you have it there. That's what it means, to the person or community, to have that be clarified in the section two P, where it says public safety, interest of public safety. In addition, I would like to end by asking the board of freeholders to make a public statement opposing ICE in the courthouse, as did Chief Justice Raffner a couple weeks ago. This is especially important, given that one of the two incidents that occurred in New Jersey where ICE took so much, was in the courthouse, was in Millsix County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, it's my question.
The first part, when you're talking about the interest of public safety?
Yeah.
Many of you have been to a lot of our meetings where we've discussed these issues. While in between the meetings, there have been a lot of discussions back and forth with a lot of stakeholders, advocates for the immigrant community, as well as representatives from the various departments that would have to implement these policies, and amongst all of the board. There's a balancing act that has to be made here. And when you're talking about the interest of public safety, quite frankly, the sheriff's officers, their primary responsibility is to maintain the safety within the courthouse. And so, we are telling our sheriff's officers that they're not to participate or aid in ICE's actions with regards to individuals who are not in county custody. So, if ICE is going to enter the courthouse, which is a public place, and despite the chief judge's statement about it, that was a request, and the courthouses are run and administered by the judiciary. And he did not ban them from the courthouse, because it's questionable whether he has that authority, it's a public place. He requested that they not come in. And so, if members of ICE come in and they take action against an individual in the courthouse who's not in our custody, the sheriff's department's custody, the sheriff's officers are being told that they're not to participate or aid in that apprehension, that detention. However, there is an interest in maintaining safety in the courthouse. So, if a situation arises where, because of this situation, an individual, I, we think of a lot of examples, and law enforcement has given us that, such if an individual should then try to evade the ICE officer and assaults the ICE officer, where sheriff's officers or law enforcement, they are under obligation to respond if they see a crime occurring. In that situation, they have to respond, and they will. So, that's why we're keeping that in, they're about public safety, because they have to maintain that. But this is, but it's being made very clear to them, this is not something where we're asking them to proactively get involved at all. And there aren't any more, there's going to be training, calls that we're going to do with the officers. So, that's the answer to what does public interest and safety mean? It means just that, making sure that the laws are not broken in the courthouse.
It's the responsibility of the sheriff's officers to make a safe environment in all the courts. Do not stop anyone from going into the courts, as the freeholder stated, Superior Court Justice Raffner requested, but they can't manage.
Yeah, exactly. So, if the board is requesting, if the board is also making this in our statement, obviously not pending, but I'm just putting it out there.
Please state your name and address in five minutes.
My name is Jessica Hudson, and I'm from Highland Park.
Would you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. I would like to begin by thanking all of you. I could just see briefly that the language for working on the resolution, I know that many of us have shared concerns with the last few meetings, and it's evident, it just, it just, this version here that I'm looking at, that the wording is more clear related to the sheriff's department. So, I appreciate the work that you've done in listening to our concerns. However, I do want to talk about this March thirty first incident a bit more. For those in attendance who may not be familiar with the incident I'm referring to, as reported by WNYC and also from obtained audio, an undocumented immigrant who had come to his March thirty first hearing at the courthouse after being given probation, was released to go home. Instead, he was held under pressure of officers in the courthouse and turned over to ICE. When this incident has been brought up, I brought it up myself last meeting, the action itself has been quickly passed over by the board of freeholders, which has led me to conclude, possibly inaccurately, that you don't believe it happened. As concerned residents, I believe we need the assurance if you're passing a policy, that if an incident such as this, or incidents of this kind, that in the future that violate policy is a concern to you, that you would warrant further investigation. So, tonight, my question is to all of you, why hasn't this incident been further investigated?
I can't state to you specifically whether or not the incident had actually occurred or not, although I know you know this is not video. We have had discussions with the sheriff's, with the sheriff to get to the bottom of the incident to occur. My concern is that in order to really accurately report back to you, there needs to be, you know, an interview with the sheriff's officers of what actually took place.
But this was March thirty first, though why hasn't that happened?
Boy, I can't answer it to you. We have a question as to why it's not concluded, but we have, we have requested that it be done and interviews to occur. Part of this is, I think, the result of the state of flux in which the policy was in. I can't say for certain that even if the sheriff's officers did that, they didn't feel that that was what they were supposed to do, which is part of why we need to have a policy that is placed and then that, as we're doing this evening, to make sure that everyone's aware of it. And most importantly for us, as we've talked about before, is to establish the training programs as soon as possible, once we've established the protocols associated with that, which we're working on diligently and trying to get that completed and fully embedded before we actually start to train and then have to retrain. So, if that incident occurred, it's unfortunate, because it is against what the spirit of the freeholders are looking to do through this policy, just as, as a general policy that they, that would be inappropriate for us to have done that.
Well, and I think you can understand why if you're passing a policy, which I am in favor of, and I'll blow my house of reservations, I haven't looked at the entire new version, but that it would be important that we have confidence that you would actually investigate violations of the policy.
There's no question about that. I mean, we do, the freeholders are not going to establish a policy and find out that the policy's unfulfilled. That's true in any policy.
And I, and I appreciate the fact that you're saying that you will follow the protocols and training, because we know how important that is.
And, is there just one point that needs to be very clear here? Part of the reason that we are really making sure that this is, you know, we're sitting on this today is because the prior policy was never formally adopted. And it was something that was in the spirit of the freeholders' intentions in two thousand and fourteen, but I think we're all aware that without formal adoption, with the records of protocols and trainings, it becomes difficult for us to expect our employees to have a clear understanding of what it is we want. And that is the main thrust of us actually trying to get this right, make it down our paper, and, and begin to go on as we mean with everyone to proceed. So, I appreciate your concerns, but in an effort for me to be fair, I don't know if there was any clarity with the sheriff's officers about what the limitations of their authority or action were. But it's going to be clear to them now.
Please state your name and address in five minutes.
My name is Ellen Witt, and I live at twenty South First Avenue in Highland Park. I'm extremely concerned that ICE has had seemingly unlimited access to the county jail, and that they are routinely inside the jail two to three times per week. How do I know this? Well, first, the warden emailed one of us and stated that ICE is routinely in the jail. Secondly, we know former inmates who have reported that several times a week, ICE comes to talk to many men who appear to be immigrants. ICE agents press them to sign papers to self-deport without any attorney present. If they don't sign these papers, ICE agents tell them that they will keep returning, over and over again, until they do. Now, this can be extremely threatening when you're held with no attorney present and are pressed for information that could impact you and your family for the rest of your lives. The reason there is no attorney present, it is because a suspected violation of immigration law is a civil matter, not criminal. So, people don't have a right to an attorney when dealing with ICE, unlike other real police. And the repeated visits, that's simply harassment. You may say that you can't restrict one police agency over another, as you did last meeting, but even when the so-called police agency is not dealing with the, with a criminal issue. But the reality is, is that ICE agents abuse their access when they press people to sign away their rights. And if someone signs away their right to do process in, in the courts under these conditions, then the county with its easy access policies is facilitating this. We need to stop the practice of allowing ICE to have unlimited access to anyone they want to target. The best and most simple enforceable change that could be made is to grant ICE's access if and only if they have a judicial warrant, showing a legal need to be there. Such a policy has been implemented in a number of jails around the country to ensure that local facilities are not used as part of the deportation machine. A valid judicial warrant issued by a judge should be the only basis for ICE to have access to any facility in the county, including the jail, the juvenile detention center, and both courthouses. I wanted to see if you could explain further, based on your new policy, which I haven't had a chance to completely study, the latest version, on what basis and conditions will ICE agents be granted access to the jail and to the juvenile detention center?
Last meeting, we had this discussion previously, and the policy statement indicated that it was our position that we could not limit their access to the adult correction center, because they do represent law enforcement, just like any law enforcement represented is entitled to, and under appropriate circumstances, to be able to interview people who commit crimes, they may be witnesses, they may be defendants, they may be victims. And our concern is that, under federal regulations, whether we like it or not, they are considered law enforcement. And if you start restricting access from an unlaw enforcement agency upon another, then it begins to have significant implications for the county. And again, our primary interest here, my responsibility is to protect, is to protect the county. However, we recognize, and I know in some of the advocacy materials we've seen, that there has been a recommendation that any of our inmates are provided with a fact sheet, which outlines what their rights are, including the right to not have to talk to anyone, including ICE or defendants. And that is intended to be our position in regards to this policy, but we are working on that fact sheet now. We obviously, it is important to be able to do that as soon as possible, and it's our expectation that in the next two weeks, we'll have that prepared, and it will be handed out to individuals. I would like to encourage the advocacy groups that we, it's not just the corrections facility that, you know, has the responsibility to try to train and provide this information. We're urging the advocacy groups to have their own materials available and have those forums available for people before they end up in the adult correction center, to understand what their rights are. But we do believe that it is not in the county's best interest, in legally the responsibility and the ability to restrict their access. And in our training, we will make, fit a priority in our training for the corrections officers, to be mindful of what's occurring in the facility, and to certainly make certain that people are provided with their, these materials, so that they don't, as you indicated, and as we've heard before, that they're being pressured into signing voluntary orders of deportation. And we hope that that process and that protocol will limit that actually occurring, but that is what is actually in the policy now.
What we were expecting was, would be a reference specifically in the policy to the question of addressing different languages, providing, and it's not actually in the policy, so that's a concern that it's not there, or the specific rights such as.
That's understandable, but we don't intend by the general policy and the freeholders to try to micro manage what, how this is going to be protocol, what the procedures are going to be.
But that's a pretty fundamental thing, that you commit yourself to providing that some language.
It's fundamental, and certainly then you should be sure that it's going to be interviewed, committing a sheet of language that the person can be, we recognize. My point is, it's a need in the, in the new policy of doing that, that's more appropriate for the protocols and procedures that are currently being developed and being developed. But we certainly do this in all kinds of ways.
And, Ellen, you know, for people who weren't with your last sign, it's not simply just a piece of paper that we're going to be providing to, you know, people who are inmates at the detention center. It's also access to a language line. And so, because we recognize there may be people who can't read or write in their particular primary language. So, there is going to be access to a language line that, and it's our intent that ICE is not going to just wander through the facility just picking out people. They're going to have to make a specific request about an individual, and wait until that individual's been advised, and there's a response. And so, that's.
So, is that going to be a clear procedure somewhere?
You're tired of them. She'll respond to your answer. But with all due respect, we have a lot of people here that want to be heard, so.
Yeah, yes. Yes. Those are part and parcel of the protocols that are being developed right now.
Thank you. Please state your name and address in five minutes.
Okay, my name is Susan Merkowitz. I'm from ten two Close Lane in Highland Park. My first idea is thank you for clearly addressing the response to ICE's detention request in what was section one A of the policy, new policy. I'm not sure if it's still section one A of the new policy. I do have two issues I'd like to request, however. I have a concern that's not clearly addressed in the current policy, nor in the new current policy, if I just look through it. On the H S Form I two forty-seven A, which is a form used by ICE to request a detainer, section two asks if the county vote A, call ICE within forty-eight hours of an expected release date, and B, detain the subject for no more than forty-eight hours. Now, the policy makes very clear the limited circumstances under which the county would comply with the detainer request. I think there also needs to be an explicit statement that the county will not notify ICE of an impending release except in those same circumstances elucidated in section one of the policy regarding compliance with detainer requests. Issue jokes. My secondary concern is more to commit data keeping and data collection, record keeping and data collection, which among other things can be used for sure compliance. I've addressed here before. But I'm still not clear on why pure, simple, non-identifying data can be collected. That is to say, how many detention requests, how many detentions have actually occurred, how many ICE visits are entered at the jails. Doesn't seem to me to be a complicated, huge IT problem. It can be as simple as, I don't know how these requests come in, but if they're committed, it could be throwing the paper in a box and counting it at the end of the month. So, I'm not sure I have a clear understanding of what's the issue with that.
Let me try to, let me, second first. As part of the protocols that will be implemented, every request for a detainer, whether it's by a visit from an ICE representative with the form, the form being emailed, the fax to the facility, or a phone call, those will be logged in, and they will not only be kept as permanent record by the facility, but will also, any inquiry made on a particular individual will be as part of their, their particular act. That's, that's, so. So, because we believe that not only is that a way to in some way assist the detainees that may be there, but as part of our own protection. Because we want to be certain that in the end, if an issue does arise, that we've kept an accurate record of what actually occurred. As regard to your first question, I'm not sure I quite understand it, other than the policy with regard to. with regard to how we're treating detainees has not changed from, I think, the version that you've seen before.
Correct.
Which is, there are only the two circumstances in which we are going to honor detainer requests.
Right, I'm not concerned about the detainer request, you covered that very well. My concern is box number two, which is, call us when you're getting out. And it seems to me that they're part and parcel of the same request, but they look like two different things when you read the forms. As a matter of fact, given our random sample of the 10 people around me who I gave the form, most of them, and I said if you knew that you could detain this person, would you call, they all said yes. Oh, didn't all say yes, but many said yes.
The intent would be, if we're not honoring detainer, we're not going to assert that issue by then calling and saying, hey, by the way, you're not going to detain, but this person's getting out at such and such a time. That'll be part of the, it's not stated in here, but it is part of what our protocol will be. We're not, we're not trying to.
Okay. As all, my concern is not that it was an attempt to slide under, but that it was an oversight that easily.
I get it, now, that makes a lot of sense. Believe me, we don't want to assist ICE. And, you know, and they're doing their job. They have a job to do, and that's their responsibility, it's not ours.
Thank you.
And just a quick point, if you're not an officer, they're not getting replied, that document does not get filled out.
Okay, good, thank you.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sure, my name is Cassandra Olivera-Sorveno, and my address is 53 Lincoln Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey. Regarding the opening statement of this policy, how Middlesex County has stated that it will continue to cooperate with all law enforcement agencies at the local state at federal levels in order to ensure the safety of its residents, I just wanted to reiterate the point that fostering a sense of trust and due process is really paramount to ensuring the safety of residents. On a personal note, I wanted to reiterate that. And on behalf of the Reformed Church of Highland Park, I wanted to share a statement. The Reformed Church of Highland Park finds itself often privy to information about traffic-related violations that lead to county jail time and then to detention. The county must stop allowing ICE access to immigrants with low-level crimes. Looking at the document, this revised version, I see in Sections 1A and what follows, very serious offenses listed involving danger to people or communities, homicides, manslaughter, death. And so, I think that this, what's these traffic-related violations really put that in sharp relief. And so, we ask that you please take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Cassandra Olivera-Sorveno, and I am impressed to be glad to see the policy continues to be worked on and fortunately it makes it harder to comment on and harder to ask questions about, but it's a good sign overall. And I hope that after there's an affirmative vote on this, that these policies and procedures that keep getting talked about, these protocols, directives, that they continue to be worked on. And I'm also wondering, will they be made available to the public? Because so much of what we brought up as issues has been responded with, oh, it's going to be in the protocols, it's going to be in the directives. And I hope that it is, I hope that the jail staff and the sheriff's department and courthouse are all given really clear steps and procedures. But how can we, as the public, know that these people are being held accountable if we don't have copies or access to the protocols and directives? So is that something that is going to be made public? And also, is there going to be accountability within the staff? Are people going to be held accountable? And our last time of work, I did, you say I have accountability for all of the decisions made at the jail and things like that, so I just wanted to just follow up on accountability.
There will be accountability by the staff, there will be training from the warden and his staff and his administration to his folks there. Absolutely, there will be accountability. Will it be made public? Yes. And if you want to add? Yeah, I would just stay too, and this is an issue that comes up in other instances when I'm an over-request. My expectation is that the protocols and procedures that will be developed will likely be different for the sheriff's department on that correctional show. By the nature of them being actively engaged in law enforcement, you may very well find that certain of those procedures or protocols deal with security of the facility, in other sensitive matters that wouldn't ordinarily be released to the public under an over-request. Our expectation is that the generic protocols and procedures that I think we're interested in will ultimately be made available to the public, just as the handbook that's in the corrections facility on an over-request, you would get that. But I would not believe that we would release anything that touches upon the security of the facility or the officers involved. So, the answer to your question is yes, with that limitation.
And then, to build on that, furthermore, another method of accountability is making the records, as somebody else brought up, of ICE interactions at the facility requests, things like that, making those publicly available, keeping track of those statistics. And they kind of know that it's been brought up before about, you know, people's privacy and things, but we're just talking general statistics, numbers.
Well, statistically, I would, as an over-request, they're not required to create that for you votes, but I would represent to you that statistics will be kept, so they will be available at the facility. Whether or not they would be available under an over-request, I'd have to think about it. I don't believe there would be any particular reason why we would release it and create that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Laura Hirsch, I live in New Brunswick. And I come to this from a rather unique perspective because the past 13 years, I've been employed in law enforcement, go federally and at a local level. And what I've been employed mostly in sex crimes and domestic violence. One of the hardest parts of my job is getting domestic violence victims to show up in court to testify against third parties. And our cases hinge upon that. And so, I believe that we need to have something in this policy to protect crime victims from courthouse proceedings. We have seen that in other court cases, not in Middlesex County, but around the country. And I believe that if crime victims are afraid, will be deported if they report, I'm going to lose the ability to build a case and to help them and to fulfill my oath to protect and serve my community. So I would like to request that there be mentioned in our policy of protecting victims of crime.
And I will tell you that, to the extent that this Freeholder Board has any authority or any control over that, we can certainly talk about it because there are one or two pieces of this that are going to get supplemented. We can certainly talk to the prosecutor about seeking some sort of protection through the victims visas that come through. But I'm going to say to you also, we are limited in certain aspects, that we don't have the ability to control who ICE may decide to target at the courthouse. It's very unfortunate. But I do think that that's an area where we can talk to the prosecutor's office and see whether there's any mechanism that the Freeholder Board can exercise with his office to increase some protections for the crime victims. It is an area that we didn't focus on, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And we'll be sure to speak to Andrew Carey, the prosecutor, and see what we can do there.
Thank you so much.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Isabel Luano, I live in Highland Park. I want to commend you for taking on this idea of typing the policy and all the work that you've been doing, and I know you've been working very hard on that. I am still concerned about one thing, and it's the, it's about the people with criminal convictions, that the detainees that will be honored, that will be, you know, granted, the people that will be held beyond their time. I am concerned that this policy is classifying people into categories, people serving of constitutional protections and people who are not being protected by it. And I understand that there's, there might be some pressure from some residents, or I don't, I don't know the reason to break it down like that, you know, when the detainees will be honored and when not. I don't know what the reasoning behind that is. I am aware about the issue of public safety, people are concerned about dangers, criminals, people with violent offenses. But I, my experience is that if somebody's really dangerous, they will be held without bail, or they will be serving a very long time, which will be more than enough for ICE to get them and do what they have to do. I understand that immigration law is federal and that people with certain backgrounds, with certain crimes, are not allowed to stay in the country, qualify for certain visas where they cannot get green cards, and that's another issue. But then there are people who are here already, who have been for a long time, and for some reason, they've been convicted at some point, they got out for some reason, they live in the community, they have a good reputation, they have children. I, my job is, I work as a case manager for a nonprofit, I work in the field of child welfare. So I have worked with parents who have been convicted of crimes, and then I help them get reunified with their children. So, you know, people make mistakes, and some people are, you know, capable of being detained, go on to. So I am concerned about this class, this way of classifying people of, you know, the people with certain offenses, yes, and people with lower offenses, no. Why not just go to everybody? That's, that's the concern that I have in this policy.
I think the Freeholders are looking at this policy to look for the fundamental reasons why it's here. We, first of all, are not currently having someone who is charged and not convicted, it's just people who have rights. The individuals that we're talking about are people that have been previously convicted of not just any crime, but first or second degree offenses aggravated in second.
People like, I don't know, I have some clients who have.
And maybe we may value, judging from here, that if a person is in our custody for some other offense, no matter how high their risk is, and the record shows that they previously been convicted of a first or second degree offense, all that we are doing is stating ICE, we will honor your detainer request. What happens individually, that person certainly has rights at that point, but we believe that it's important that we look at all members of the community and realize that if that someone has been convicted and is once again in our facility, that is appropriate, honor that for that element. And it's limited to that, to that scenario. And as you know, the first or second degree offenses are serious crimes.
I think it's important to, if you ask why aren't all offenses, doesn't all offenses create an automatic bar to someone staying in this country? Whether or not, you know, no one here on this board created the immigration policies, but there are certain offenses that are a bar to someone staying in the country. And that is just the way it is. There is a delineation already in immigration law. And I understand, I mean, you're working as a counselor, I'm a lifelong public defender, I understand people could be voted, but the problem is, our federal immigration law says that if you commit one of those offenses and you're not a citizen, that one of the consequences is that you lose your ability to stay in this country. And that's the situation that we have to grapple with here, so that's where that section came in. You're making a distinction that there are other offenses that don't bar you from staying in the country. And those people should not be exposed to being held for 48 hours detention.
So the line was drawn with the offenses that have to do with immigration law?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So the line was drawn with the offenses that have to do with getting a visa with immigration law, that the offenses that prevent you from getting a visa, from getting a green card?
Absolutely, because that's actually how everybody operates. This is what I do in my job every day. I know there's certain offenses I pray my clients don't get convicted of, because I cannot help them anymore. It's just the status of our immigration law.
Good, thank you.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Diana Wayne, I'm the Policy Counsel of the Americans for the Liberties Union of New Jersey. And so, the ACLU of New Jersey is here to represent the rights and liberties of everyone in New Jersey. I'm going to start off by commending the Board for a couple of things that I was very pleased to see when I read this policy. I was very happy to see the commitment to not enter into 287G contracts, so thank you. And I was very happy to see the intent to inform people of their rights if ICE is in a facility and wants to talk to someone who is currently in custody. Now, I would ask, as others have before me, that the intent to provide language access, information about people's rights being provided to them in the language of their preference, not as a replacement for including the fat vision in protocols and rules, but as an additional measure that would memorialize this Board's intent to provide information about people's rights so that someone in the future who does not share the same sympathetic intent as this Board does is not able to undermine the Board's intent by providing no accessible information and then pointing to a policy that actually doesn't mandate that information be provided to people who are incarcerated. However, there are still some constitutional concerns with this policy as it's written. As, I mean, you already know, the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution requires that arrests and detention be supported by probable cause. And as currently written, the policy will allow honoring detainer requests in one of two situations. If a request is accompanied by an order of removal that is signed by a judge, and I thank you for including that request, that's something that not many others have thought to do. But also, if the person has been previously convicted of any number of offenses that are enumerated in the policy. But this is the piece that directly implicates liability concerns. The governments across the country, in many cases, have been found liable and have had to pay out thousands of dollars to people for violations of their constitutional rights by holding them without a legal basis. And the, as you've already expressed, the intent of the criminal convictions pieces of this policy is to only concern people who are convicted of first and second degree offenses. However, the language of the policy does not make that clear. The list of offenses that are included in this policy include offenses that are not first or second degree offenses. And so, I would ask that there be some clarification that, actually, I urge the Board to amend the policy to clarify that detainer requests would only be honored only if the request, the person is convicted of any of the listed offenses in the first or second degree, and the request is accompanied by a removal order signed by a judge, rather than allowing for an either-or situation. The, and Councilwoman, you look a bit perturbed, is there a question that I can answer for you?
No, because I think it's, it's been stated that the person has to be previously convicted of a first or second degree offense. And there are enumerations here, right? But, and some of these, we're aware, like, there's lesser included that would not be covered here. So we had a situation the other day. that would not be covered here. So we had a situation the other day where someone was pointed out that someone was released. That person was being charged with a third degree. That person had previously been convicted of a third degree offense. So that person was not held. There was not a 48-hour detainee that was honored. So.
Yes.
I guess I'm a bit, I'm just a bit confused by your, your concern here, because it is, it's very clear in our policy that we'll only honor convictions on first or second degree, or the equivalent from another jurisdiction.
Well, I think what is adding to the confusion is the fact that some of the, the things that are listed simply are not offenses in and of themselves. For instance, offenses causing, causing serious bodily injury. That can simply mean, that could actually literally mean getting into a fight resulting in a charge or conviction of a simple assault. That would not be a first or second degree offense.
No, no. That, that's not, it's very clear that the intent is on the top in the paragraph, it's a first or second degree offense. So if there's a crime of bodily harm that's involved in, if that results in a first or second degree, a conviction on first and second degree offense, that will cause, that will trigger this. If someone is charged with a simple assault, that does not fall within this category. This is not a first or second degree offense.
Um, so then I would, I would just ask.
The time is up, ma'am.
Yes, and so in conclusion, just to briefly wrap.
The time is up. Right. Thank you for your comments. You can take your comments to the next speaker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Joanna Hade. I am the current Coordinator of the New Jersey Alliance for International Justice. We are a statewide coalition of over 30 orgies, and I remember twice in New Jersey. Our members, including Karen Chersey, Sylia New Jersey, and others. So I am here to represent that body of organizations that really care about this issue. So I want to first commend you for looking at this policy and looking into how you can, your current policies in the county that you've been reading. There are a couple of things that I think we've already heard from multiple people, and as someone who's been doing this across the state, we need to be highlighted for you all. One is the, the lack of clarity. I understand that you have some protocol that is going to, if my list is right, the protocol is going to cover how requests to hold someone, to interview someone will be handled, what, how language access will be included, how or what kind of communication you are having with ICE or ICE is having with you, how that information is being kept. And all of these things are not necessarily clarified into law. So first of all, I think for those of us who work in immigration, we understand that the ICE is not necessarily the most transparent of agencies. They also are known for lying to law enforcement. They're known to lie to you all, unfortunately, and putting a lot of your officers in a position where they are left to make a decision on the word of a federal agent that is known or has the precedent of not necessarily following the Constitution. So by allowing all these things to just be left open up to discretion of protocol and/or discretion of the individual handling it, whether it be the sheriff, the board, nor the staff, you're actually opening up your staff to have to make some of these decisions rather than codifying them clearly here. So I would really urge you all to just look at those things. I understand that you're looking into potential protocol, but there are some things, as we've heard before, that don't necessarily have to be in the protocol. They could be here so that they are forever in place as a way that you're not really leaving in a position where ICE could potentially lie to your board, lie to your staff, work around your policies, find loopholes there that could end up in constitutional violation. So that's one thing I would absolutely mention. I'm sure I don't have to tell you that Middlesex has one of the largest immigrant populations in the state, probably the largest undocumented Indian population in the state. So we really have to understand that while the conversation at the national level could do one way, I appreciate that you're looking at this, but you really have a large population that could be affected by your policy not being clear. So I need to ask if you look into that. And one thing also that we heard recently about the convictions, I don't want to get into all those different pieces, but the reality is that while, yes, some of those might be barring someone from, keep staying in the country if they are non-citizens, the reality is that it is not the job of the county to make those distinctions. That's federal immigration law. That's why you have ICE to deal with that, rather than you making those distinctions, right? So in those cases, I think by codifying that, you're basically getting into the weeds of getting into what federal policies look like and whether you qualify or not for immigration relief or not, on behalf of ICE, rather than, the folks who would be picked up for any of these offenses are going to be flagged to ICE and then it would be up to ICE to decide, to look for a judge, to get a judge's order to find those folks anyway. So if you have a simple language that clarifies that you would honor those judicial orders, then, then there's no need to start looking into who was first or second degree or could, could or could not lose their green card or whatever it is that, that ICE will have to do. That's, that's the job of ICE to do, not for the county. So thank you.
We want to continue to ask that ICE not have access to jails unless they have a judicial order and that sheriff cars, or sheriffs not assist ICE in any way in the courts. We ask that the freeholders take initiative publicly and stand against ICE being in the courts. The freeholders should create clear policies that assure that they are complying with them. I just want to speak about my own worries, as I am a mother and father to both my children. I'm scared that when I go out to work, that I'm going to see a sheriff car and that they're going to detain me. I'm not going to be able to come back home and see my children. And what are they going to do with my children, as I am the only breadwinner from my family? Thank you for taking attention and for your concern.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Minacolta, Maddowar, New Jersey. I'm also a Middlesex County Freeholder candidate. I have a few questions. There are slightly different point of view about this resolution. One, I'm not trying to be negative, but I would like to know, does this passing, this resolution, will it have any impact on financial and any other support coming from the federal government or the state government?
You're asking if it will have, if we'd be in jeopardy of losing federal funds?
Or any other support, whether it's a law enforcement or anything else?
Well, President Trump has made a threat, and he's of your party as well. He's made the threat that if we don't cooperate with ICE, that we could be in jeopardy of funding for certain programs in the county. And our concern, that's been expressed by freeholders, county council, and myself, is we have a responsibility to protect the taxpayers of Middlesex County, protect the citizens of Middlesex County as far as their safety as well. So do we risk that we may lose funds? We will fight them if they tell us that if we don't assist them, and we're not going to assist them, but, and then we'll have to take them to court if they're going to stop us from funding.
I wasn't, I wasn't asking about something that was said. I was asking, is there anything, any laws right now that we are in jeopardy of when passing this resolution?
No.
No.
That's all I was asking. And just a comment about what you said, Director. Not all Republicans believe that Donald Trump is right, so it doesn't matter who he is for my party. Doesn't mean I agree.
I just wanted, because.
I understand that, but it doesn't mean I agree.
You mentioned that you're a candidate for freeholders. That's all.
That doesn't mean I agree with you.
That's all. That's it.
Now, I have another question. I am a little confused about the law, so if it, uh.
May I just, may I just, I'm sorry, not to take your time away, but there's been a lot of comments about this being a law. And, and I think county council can also tell you, this is not a law. It's a resolution. So this is not a situation where we need to pass a law that can be, you know, we just get, and county council can speak to that, but I just want to clarify that. So there was a comment made before, you know, if, to put more language in there so that nobody can change it. Let's be clear, this is not a law, this is a resolution, so another freeholder board, they can change this. This is, this is the intent of the current Freeholder Board, and it's going to remain this way, the intent. But I just want that clarified, because I think five or six different people mentioned that.
I, I just have a question about detain criminals, whether it's a one, two, three, it doesn't matter. Isn't it, isn't it true that constitutionally they can only be held for 72 hours? Constitutional, detainer, I'm not talking about the detainer. I got arrested right now. I only, I can only be held in jail for 72 hours. Is that correct?
No, no, that's not true.
If, if, I mean, before I see a judge, before I get a bail here, it's 72 hours. Yes, right?
The bail reform and speedy trial legislation that's gone into effect this year does accelerate the process by which you are entitled to go before a judge.
How long? What's that?
I believe the name is 72.
Okay, great. So I want to ask, if someone was already held 72 hours before their bail hearing, and then you got a detain request, for whatever level it is, I'm not saying, if you got a detain request for 48 hours more, isn't that violating their constitutional rights to hold them with that detain request?
Not under the policy that we have created.
It wouldn't violate their constitutional rights if they're held 96 hours instead of 72?
No, they're not, they're, they're two separate things. In terms of speedy trial for pending charges, our purpose of holding some, someone on a 48-hour detain request would only be in circumstances where they have previously convicted of a first or second degree offense.
And, and this 48-hour detain request, is this a federal law, state law, or is this a policy that this board?
These, these are policies that are in, they're actually in the federal register that they are enacted by the federal government.
Okay, so they're federal laws, okay. All right. I want to ask another question. Multiple small offenses, things that are not level one or two. Someone who commits a crime, let's say, on a monthly basis, they're not willing to be rehabilitated. Do you still not assist ICE with detaining them?
Unless they've been the subject of a prior order of removal from the judge or they've committed a first or second degree offense and been convicted, we would not be honoring a 48-hour detainee.
Okay. And finally, I just wanted to make a comment to the field, where I think you should also make it very clear, the language, that everyday people that walk in the street that don't commit a crime, because I feel like this resolution is just pertaining to criminals, everyday people who are undocumented, I don't think they should have, you know, shouldn't have a false level of comfort. When they're walking in the street, they should always be wary of, of ICE agents around and they should listen to news to know where the ICE agents are. Thank you, freeholders.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
There is a request. I want to say, first of all, thank you so much for, for this initiative and also I'm seeing under the Community Services, obviously, Community Services, 7894R and 7896R, which in terms of support to the progress we're accomplishing as a community, legal, in terms of legal services, has been supported. So thank you, Blanquita, thank you, Freehold Channing, for what you've been doing. It's necessary, because I think, and this, this morning, I was meeting with the, the Mexican Secretary of Labor Affairs, and we're talking about the necessity of legal representation for, for migrants and thinking about Middlesex County and the population range. It was very important for us as, as leaders on the Mexican community to speak with other leaders as well and ask them for support and funding and, and more services, because it's necessary. We've been seeing, we've been working very closely with my friends, good presence, activists, and, and organizations, that the situation is increasing. They were talking about 200% of incidents increased and the necessity of more legal services and counseling, and mental health counseling is increasing. So thinking about that, and again, last, last meeting, I said, I suggest that we should have a community first department, because we have many complaints on, 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 many people has been used, these immigration issues, to abuse the community by charging it too much, by taking the money, by taking the documents, by exploring the needs. Even lawyers, people out there, even lawyers, have been taking their money just for counseling. For example, we have two cases this week, $750 just for, for hearing the cases, and finally, they didn't say anything to us. Just by saying that, two cases, three cases that came to us directly. How many other cases have been in there? So many people have been using this as an excuse to make money and abuse people's rights. And I think that's something that we should pay attention to. And, and as I see that, and again, I would say, thank you to the freeholders for considering all this and thinking about how we can, and President Reyes, you mentioned so well, to protect our citizens and their rights, because at the end, we're thinking, we're thinking on, on the children and, and, and their, and their rights. Many of them, as I mentioned before, many of us are single mothers, many of us are mothers that have all these children. And, and again, we, we, we need to ensure that the safer is, is well taken care of and not, and so avoid all the people is using of pain and needs in order to, to continue making profit from it. So we were seeking some models. We've seen some models in other states that protect everyone equally and offer legal services and counseling, so necessary, so much right now in our county. And we have this problem, we mentioned before, and speak with freeholders, they're, it would, about the necessity of having these community meetings, meaning gatherings, to inform people about the rights and create this path for them to come over and, and, and say, these people, or this group, or these lawyers are abusing me. How I can protect myself? Just put it out there again, and again, thank you so much for, for your support.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Timothy Bergner. I'm from New Brunswick, New Jersey. So I'm not really a politician, so I don't know what's going on at all, though. But one of the things I took issue with was the part under offenses against public order of indemnity, visual danger substances. Now, I'm not sure if that concludes all the schedule, all the jokes talked about. But I know that life is hard for a lot of people, especially the poor people, and especially illegal immigrants from like maybe possibly a war-torn country who escaped to, to escape persecution or danger or violence. So they might go take something like marijuana, they might take cocaine, and they might do whatever they need to do to relax a little bit. And then, of course, that builds up and it can cause an addiction. But using it for personal use is, I feel like it should not be a, a crime worth being sent back to a war-torn country for, torn away from a family from, because you had an ounce of marijuana on you, because you had some osipor on you from a medic, a expired medication, or you have an addiction. And selling it, I can understand, you can fuel the possible addiction in the neighborhood. However, hurting for oneself and using it and being caught with it, I feel like that should not be an offense worth cooperating fights for, especially in, with the case of marijuana. You can see that across the country, people are wanting to make that recreation, to make that peopleless. I don't believe it is here, but it's. I don't believe it is here, but it's, not even alcohol is considered a Schedule I or II or III drug. And yet, it can be just as addicting or as violent, and actually cause and lead to a lot of the cases, the other serious offenses, like aggravated assault or sexual assault, carjacking, robbery. And yet, the other drugs, some of the other drugs won't be that. So I'd just like to raise that point. Any responses? Is it buying and selling, or?
The, the first and second degree offenses, sentences, excuse me, don't include what you're describing.
Okay. So what does it scratch you? What's controlled dangerous substance?
You have to read the context. The only reference in here to controlled dangerous substance, if I recall. Okay, underwriting that. It's really, you have to get into the statute itself. It's when you do have a certain amount that you have in your possession, analyze to a first or second degree offense, because there's presumption of sale, that you're doing it for purposes of selling it. That's the intent of that preference. You have to read 2035, that's what it includes, not, not simple use or having under a certain mass. That's not a first or second degree offense.
You'd have to have awful lot of weed.
You gotta...
And... I mean, the other issue I have with escape or eluding an officer, I mean, most officers are fine. They won't, you know, lie to police supporters, but some officers have been known to assume that, write on police report that someone was resisting arrest because they, they knocked off to an officer, or they made, they stepped away at the wrong moment.
This presupposes a conviction, not just an allegation.
Right. But in a court of law, they usually side with the police no matter what, and the defendant might not have the ability to pay for a great lawyer that can defend them well. Then they're going to side with the officer, and then they're not, it might be the case that, I just don't feel like that's being, that's worth being sent away for, because you ran, because you were scared, because you didn't know what was going to happen to you, you didn't want to be killed.
Well, just, just to really, because you're speaking a specific crime, that level of eluding is kind of like the analogy to how much weed you have to have. The, a level of eluding is somebody, and because I represent people in New Jersey, you go on a six-county car chase, right? You are putting residents in danger. Not, it's not just the officers in danger. They're simple, what you're talking about is, you know, I shrug my hands, I don't, I don't passively let them handcuff me. That's not a first or secondary offense. So the kind of eluding here, because I may have mentioned before, lesser included. You can have drugs, but not all drug offenses rise to a first or second degree. It's the same thing with eluding. There are a lot of crimes that, you know, there are lesser forms of it, with the same title, we're saying first or second degree versions.
So is, the specific parts of the law will be defended if this is reconciled, right? So if ICE looks at this and they say, oh, controlled dangerous substance, oh, eluding an officer, they won't twist the facts to...
It's not within their control, this is a determination that we are making under the detainer request, not their interpretation of it. It's a conviction of a first or second degree offense. Thank you, your time is up. Please state your name and address, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Charles Croweville, I'm from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I want to begin by thanking the board and everyone who was involved in putting this policy together. I don't think it's perfect, but I think it's an improvement on what you had before, so I hope you'll pass it tonight. And I do have some constructive feedback on it. I would like to see Customs and Border Patrol agents also included in this. I don't think there's any reason not to include them. And I do want to raise, you know, a concern about the March 31th map in the county courthouse. I know it's, it's been asked about many times, it's been spoken about many times here, but we still don't seem to have the official facts. And I'm concerned about why that is. It was said that that was perhaps, you know, confusion that resulted from the state of flux in which the policy was in. And while that may have contributed to it, I think that it, it is more of a concern that the sheriff herself has shown a lack of leadership on this issue. She has not been to these meetings. She probably could provide this fact, and, well, I mean, the reason I'm talking about this is because I still don't think the policy is crystal clear on whether or not it's going to be okay the next time sheriff's officers put cuffs on somebody. And can I get an assurance that immediately this will stop? If you pass this tonight, then no more sheriff's officers will...
I do want your assurance that we would not condone support any activity by a sheriff's officer to assist ICE. Now, we're not going to be there 24/7 with every sheriff's officer. We would not support them doing that. But we're not there every minute of the day, Charlie, you know that. So we don't have no, you can't control it. No, you can't control it either, if we're not there. We're not, this is what the policy that we want to institute, and we want, we're going to vote on it tonight, but if, if something happens, then they would be dealt accordingly.
Okay. Well, something did happen on March 31st. It was said that in order to get to the bottom of that, there needs to be an interview with the sheriff's office. Can you promise us tonight that by the next meeting, the facts will be found and shared with the public about what happened on March 31st in Judge Ray's courtroom?
We can't give you that assurance. Charlie, because if there, if there's a process by which someone is being disciplined, if a parole wasn't followed, we wouldn't be able to police anything. We can't make that assurance the entire...
So if they broke the policies, you can't, you tell us.
Not if there's a pending discipline, you know that.
Well, I mean, is there a pending discipline?
No, no, we can't answer that question, sir.
Because they haven't been added to yet, and it's now June 1st.
Don't know the answer, Charlie.
So I, I think that the public deserves to know what happened there. But I'll move on, I'm equally concerned about ICE's access to the jail. As somebody who spent 36 hours in that jail, I was surprised at how many things I was asked to sign. And I'm not an immigrant, I'm a U.S. citizen, and gosh, I would be really intimidated if I had agents coming on a regular basis asking me to sign stuff and intimidating me. And I don't think that should be allowed, and I mean this seriously, that, you know, if I wanted to interview somebody in the jail, I probably wouldn't get that access. And if ICE is not investigating a criminal matter, if they're only there on a simple matter, they should be treated the same as Charlie Croweville, New Brunswick Today, who wants to interview somebody against their will. They shouldn't be allowed. And I think that you can take a stronger position on this. I do want to also just ask about one resolution here, 928. You've, are you going to spend $21,000 on investigative equipment for the prosecutor? Can you tell me what type of investigative equipment that is?
I think that's an unmanned aircraft, is that, is that your terminology?
Yes.
A drone. Okay. And so is this the first drone the prosecutor's purchasing?
I can't answer this.
The four, the four line is.
Okay. Tell me, what are the, why do they need the drone, or do they want it for?
It says, as it says in, in the, in the resolution, it's investigative equipment. So it's going to be used for investigations. How, how it's going to be used, I can't answer that. You might want to...
Are there any protocols or any controls that go used to protect the privacy of people, or they're, you know, any, any policies in place?
That's a question you have to ask him.
Another guy who's not here tonight. And I, and I just want to bring home the point that this sheriff and the prosecutor should come to these meetings. It should be a part of this resolution. And I understand it would help if they came to one meeting. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Cecilia Larentes, I live in Somerset, but I am the local coordinator with Food and Water Watch, a nonprofit that works to protect public health here in New Brunswick, 100 Bayard Street. We represent over 7,000 members in Middlesex County. I want to echo what previous speakers have said. Thank the board for rewriting and clarifying this policy and working to eliminate cooperation with ICE, listening to our feedback. I would, I want to echo the requests others have made for clarity to the extent that is possible, to make sure that, that this cooperation definitely will not happen, and that ICE will not find loopholes in this policy to the extent that is possible. I also understand that there are limitations to what this board of chosen Freeholders can do within the limits of federal laws and immigration law on the national level. But I want to emphasize that it is important to continue to take as strong a position as you possibly can. I appreciate the crafting of this policy, which, as you said, is not, is not law, but, but it's very important to have this, this sort of, to have these strong, these positions be as strong as possible to really express solidarity with the people that you're representing, the large undocumented immigrant population in Middlesex County, and refusing, refusing to cooperate with ICE. So, so I thank you for practicing, crafting your policy and taking stances to the extent that we can, that ICE shouldn't be allowed in the county courthouses. I understand you're saying that you don't have control over that, nor the what is qualified as a first or second degree offense, but, but I think that, that what everyone has said is really important to be continued, it's really important that we continue to emphasize the importance of, of understanding the human context of every person that's living here, whether they are undocumented or not. Because I think that having that in mind, even if there are limitations placed on us by the broader structure and federal laws, will, will allow us to continue to practice policy to the extent that we can, to, to the benefit of the people that we represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Brian Lee, I'm also from Somerset. First of all, procedural question, this is only a comment on the resolution.
Only on the resolution?
But there's a public...
Any resolution listed?
But there's a public comment period later, right?
Yes.
And people can come up again with, you can get to finish, okay, other questions, they can come up again, right?
Yes.
Okay. Procedural question, okay. And then my first point is that when someone, someone said, I think a few people said that they, they want to see how, what you say, protocols are clarified as a resolution. They are saying that it's easier to change protocols than it is to change resolutions, so that it would be a little bit more cemented for future reference. I think that's the point you were getting at. And I have a question. In terms of accountability, if someone feels like that, you know, let's say three months from now, when this has been recently implemented, someone feels like that the Middlesex County Sheriff violated some of these policies, who would they complain to, what is, do you have any procedures for that?
If a sheriff's officer in the courthouse violates a particular protocol that's been, that they've been trained for and that's been implemented by the sheriff, they're subject to discipline in accordance with the sheriff's disciplinary policies and the county's disciplinary policies.
I'm, my question is, who would they complain to, like, is there a number, or is there... I'm guessing?
Oh, you're talking about if someone feels that they've been aggrieved, and they want to file a complaint. And, you know, they're trying to complain if they feel that they've been, somehow their rights have been violated by a sheriff's officer, and they, what they would either do is they would go to the local police, they'd go to the county's office, if they go out to find the victim, or they would complain directly to the sheriff's department, to the sheriff's department.
Okay. And I would just like to reiterate and clarify, I think, the point that people made earlier about the distinction between people who have been convicted of first and secondary offenses versus the everybody, everybody else that will not be, that will not cooperate with ICE. I think what's getting people worked up about this distinction is that there are already mechanisms in place in our society, or there should be, to protect people from dangerous criminals. And, you know, that should be enough, and that, that, you know, to cooperate with ICE in those, to make the distinction that you will cooperate with ICE in those cases, is going that extra step further. And it's also, it's basically, and, you know, I understand that those are the kind of people that are, you know, no longer allowed to apply for any legal residency in the U.S., but there are also other people that are, you know, by law, they can't apply for residencies in the U.S. Again, like for instance, anybody who's been deported and then were caught coming back in. I don't know if that's a first or second degree offense, but they would also no longer be allowed to apply for residency. And would you cooperate with ICE in those cases?
But that, that is the second piece. Does, if they have, if there's been a previous final order deportation, right?
That may be no longer...
Yes, but then we had that was signed by a judge, right? That would be a basis on which we hold them for 48 hours.
Part of the, my confusion is that a lot of people would just tell you that anybody who's illegal is, you know, legally not allowed to stay here anyway. So why make that distinction between first and secondary offenses and everybody else that will be, has this, you know, non-cooperation with ICE?
Because the distinction is, there are people who commit offenses that, obviously, they're breaking the law, but there's a distinction between things that endanger public safety in a way that's not acceptable, right? So, for example, if someone has previously been convicted of rape, if someone's previously been convicted of a certain level, a high degree level of travel abuse, kidnapping, those are things that absolutely, absolutely bar you from being allowed to stay here legally if ICE or any, you know, federal agency gets you, right? They may not get you, but if they get you, that, that requires deportation, right? So that's the distinction. Somebody who has a license suspended, right, it doesn't need automatic deportation. So we are making that distinction.
You get a right, my point, that there are, there are other mechanisms in place to protect, you know, society from people like that, besides the court system. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Sure. My name is Tom O'Brien, I'm from Old Bridge. A lot of people who commend you folks and the job that you're doing and stuff like that, and also suggest that you're improving it, you go along, lucky for many of them, I'm not the same thing. But on observation, it seems to turn out useful work in process. If you vote on it today, it might be premature. You still have to check out the 331 incident, which you haven't yet done. The ICE presence in the jails might be another issue you might want to inquire into.
Do you speak on it on mic?
Oh, sure. The ICE presence in the jails also might be another issue you might want to inquire into. And this, this thing that you published today, no one's had an opportunity to look at it in depth, but some of the things in it are kind of strange. I'm looking at Section 1A, subsection 3, double I. And we're talking a first or second degree offense predicated upon a person who has a handgun or a simulated weapon, you mean like something you buy in Toys R Us or something like that? You might want to take a look at that, too. It's just a suggestion, it's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to vote by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Councilman, any, any of you on Freeholders have any separate items to vote separately?
I think Resolution 741-896.
Freeholder Director, I also have to say.
Same one?
Yes, sir.
One else?
Freeholder Director, motion to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 17-851 through Resolution 17-930, excluding Resolution 17-896, we voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tamara, all in.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Hopple? Yes. Freeholder Mara? Yes. Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by both Freeholder Armwood and Freeholder Valente, and that's Resolution 17-896.
Is there a motion? Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Hopple, all in.
Freeholder Armwood?
Present, not moving.
Freeholder Hopple?
Yes.
Freeholder Mara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Present, not moving.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll go and meeting up to the public, are there any things you'd like to speak on? Please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Nina Bulka, again, marijuana in Jersey. I have a few questions for you. The first one is, has this Freeholder Board passed the resolution yet condemning the pipeline going through Middlesex County? And that's connecting to the Williams 206 compressor in Frank... And that's connecting to the Williams 206 compressor in Frank?
No.
What is the holdup last time? And actually, I think the last five meetings, you said you're waiting for more information? I think it's been more than enough time.
All the questions come from the chair.
I am asking the other.
Also, all I'm saying is that we filed as interveners, as many people had asked us, and that allows us and anybody else that files as an intervener to get information in reference to that.
Do you not think that a resolution condemning that pipeline would represent your constituents in the county, just like Somerset Freeholders did the same for their county, representing their constituents, wouldn't be a representation of your constituents and send a strong message condemning that pipeline that's going through our county? Do you not think that?
I feel that we still need more information to make a determination if we want to oppose it. And as I stated to you, or you had heard me before in other meetings, that the agency that makes the determination to approve or deny the application for that project is FERC. And those are the folks that, your argument or your debate is better, or your comments are best to make your comments to.
So you think the people in FERC wouldn't be impacted if you passed the resolution condemning? Something on behalf of your constituents?
I don't know if that would have an impact on their decision. That would, I'm on the first.
What is the hurt in passing so far? Why is it so, like, why is it still not passed? Like, what is, like, is it, is there, do you have a special interest in this pipeline or what's the holdup?
I don't have stock in the company, I can tell you that.
So it doesn't matter, I'm just asking, what is the holdup? It's a simple resolution? I have a question. You just passed, you know, a bunch of resolutions, and the resolution about the immigration policy. How long did it take you to pass the resolution on immigration policy? Like, did it take 10 meetings, 12 meetings, 15? Like, how long does it take for the board to pass a resolution?
I think it took from 2014 to 2017.
Yeah, so we have to wait for this resolution to condemn our pipeline for two years?
No, no, that's not necessarily so.
But it takes time to make sure that we review everything and make an, try to make an intelligent decision on a policy or a resolution, as in its nature.
So something condemning a pipeline which could hurt your constituents health-wise and maybe even financially is, it has to be put on hold? I mean, it doesn't make sense. Like, I'm just not getting the sense of, this is something that's, passing it would send a strong statement and it would be a good representation of the people of Middlesex County. And you've been asked about this many times over the last five or six meetings?
And I think I've explained my position to you clearly.
I have a question. I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I would like this about something else. Ordinance 436. Okay, going back to, I just, I didn't, 436? Yeah, the 22-story building that you're funding, $13 million, to him backing another $35 million? I didn't, I didn't get, I don't know, I didn't hear the answer to this, maybe someone else asked it, but who represented DEFCO with the city's hands? And was DEFCO chosen by BIC? Or did someone just come forward and say, hey, let's let DEFCO build the building? DEFCO was chosen by a redevelopment firm, which is the normal procedure in the city of redeveloping. Okay, and who represented them? What lawyer, what firm? Wendell's Marks. Is that your firm?
No, it is not.
It is not your firm. I just want to make a comment before I sit. I think the, you know, a holdup like a resolution, you know, for this pipeline, that's really bad representation of your constituents, especially health-wise, because I know it's going through my town, okay? And it's going at the local city as well, so. And if anybody wants financial on the building, their building, 22-story building, I have copies for you. You can see the numbers that they're spending.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
I'm Brian Lee again, I'm from Somerset. And just to be back where he said, the elected officials who condemned this pipeline include Somerset County Board of Freeholders, a few of elected assemblymen, state senators, Bonnie Watson Common, my representative, Senator Cory Booker, and Menendez. So, I mean, I'm sure their staff has done a lot of homework on this, so, you know, maybe you guys can skip a little bit of that. Okay, but on to a different issue. I know I'm from Somerset, so I would like to talk about something that does affect people that lived in Middlesex. Recently, in the past few weeks, I have been to two emergency protests. And they happened because ICE came and arrested four people that were Indonesian refugees from Indonesia. And the first protest I went to was for Arino Massey. He is a devout Christian ethnic Chinese who has escaped from Indonesia around the 90s to come to the US to see extreme persecution there. And I went, by the time I got to the protest, he had already been put on a plane. And he lives in Matuchen, that's part of Middlesex, just to make it clear. And he had already been put on a plane. And I was told at that protest that even though I know that he's been deported, his 12-year-old son Joe didn't even know yet. I mean, it was just, it was extremely heartbreaking and screwed up that I am a perfect stranger who doesn't even know, like, I got to cry about it before his son, that his son never got to say goodbye to him. And then I think it was last week, in the pouring rain, I went to protest detention and pending deportation of Odi Manopo, who is another Indonesian ethnic Chinese refugee. His daughter spoke at the occasion, her name was Stella. It was pouring rain, and she was crying when she told us that the thing she missed the most is her father's smile. That when she came to see him in the detention center, he was still smiling and laughing. That his faith in God is what's, you know, keeping him through, even though Shu, of course, is extremely worried for him. I know this doesn't, it's not part of the resolution that you passed. These are people that have no criminal records at all, they're just refugees. And the only reason they were targeted is because for years, they've been cooperating with ICE. They have been going back to ICE as requested to continue checking in. And so their information was on hand, and so it was easy for ICE to get to them. I don't know, I mean, you know, I'm not an expert on the ins and outs of the powers of freeholders, but maybe there are things you can do to protect refugees, you know, people applying for refugee status in your county too. And I would urge you all to please look into it and be creative, find ways to work around, you know, the existing system. There are people whose lives are being torn apart. And I would just like to add, even though it shouldn't matter, the four people that have been detained, and one of them's already been deported, they were actually extremely active in helping out New Jersey residents after Hurricane Sandy. They have done the awful, the people of the state, and a lot of people, and yet they are not being offered the chance for safe refuge from a country that is once again becoming extremely inhospitable to Christians and ethnic Chinese people. Thank you.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Jessica Henderson from Hyland Park. I merely wanted to thank you because what I understand is they passed the resolution and I just kind of missed the excitement.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Evening, once again, Freeholders, Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick, Texas. I'll ask, are you ready yet to call for the impeachment of the President of the United States?
I would love to see him go as President, but there's nothing that we can do about that. I would recommend you call your senators and congress.
Okay, I will keep, put pressure on those folks. How about the governor of the state, Chris Christie, should he be impeached?
Who?
He's the governor, and he's good friends with the president. And he's creating a dangerous, toxic situation for our whole state.
Shouldn't he impeach for the whole country?
Yeah, so, well, one thing we all have is our voices. So I try to use my voice to push for these types of things. And I would encourage the freeholders to use their voices and stand up, take more of a stand on these types of issues. Use your voice, you have a voice, you have a louder voice than I do, actually, because you're an elected official representing almost a million people. So I do want to ask the freeholders, if you're supporting anyone for governor, I think it's really important that everybody gets out there to vote, there's a lot of choices. Do you have, are you making an endorsement?
I already made my endorsement.
And who are yours?
Phil Murphy.
I do, you know, just want to encourage everybody to vote. There are some choices here at the county level and at the local level. And I'm proud to say I'm supporting the Central Jersey Progressive Democrats, a group that is really fighting for the types of changes that I believe in, I think a lot of people here believe in, and I'm encouraging everybody to vote for them. Vote Column C for Change on Election Day if you want change here in Middlesex County. The election is Tuesday, June 6th, and it's the primary election. So if you're not affiliated with a party yet, you can decide to affiliate one that day and then cast a dollar. I think everybody who has that right should exercise that. Like I said, we have our voices, that's one form of our voice, our vote is our voice. So don't pass up that opportunity to vote. I do want to ask about the ordinance 436 was allotting, we were told $12 million for the purchase of office space in a to-be-construted building right near here. I got this document here and it says that at least the funding currently, it looks like DEFCO's expecting $13 million for that. Can you just clarify whether it's $13 million or $12 million?
I'm not sure the exact amount, somewhere between $12 and $13 million. I'm not sure.
Can't help but feel like I was misled when I was told $12, obviously, and $13 here.
We would never try to mislead you, Charlie.
Well, it was also another thing that I had to bring up in the first place. It wasn't advertised that there was $12 million going with this until I asked and got that figure. And the documents that people were given were unclear about it. So I think you could be more transparent, I hope you will.
I'm very transparent.
Okay, so one thing that could definitely be more transparent is the Middlesex County Ethics Board. And I guess I'm correct that Tony Vignolo is still the ethics attorney?
Yes.
And that is a big problem because he is an ethics violator. He did not file a financial disclosure form last year. The county council cooked up a little two-page report that said that it's okay, he doesn't need to file. But the New Brunswick Ethics Board is actually investigating him, and investigating him for that failure to file. And this year, he filed. So which is it? Does he not have to file, or does he have to file?
The answer to your question is, our opinion still stands and is not required, he's not required to file voluntarily.
Okay, well, I think people should come to the June 13th meeting of the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board, basically, nobody ever comes to it. They only meet three times a year, if that, and their meetings are at 3:00 PM. So not easy for working people to make it to. But anybody who can, who wants to see where the rubber meets the road, where this county really becomes corrupt and where the train wreck starts, is at the Ethics Board. Those folks are supposed to police the very same types of things that were discussed earlier. Conflicts of interest, making sure that folks are active in the interests of the people who put them there, not their own side interests, private interests, personal interests. And that board is dysfunctional. They've got an attorney who's an ethics violator. You can't have any credibility when you're not following the rules yourself. And so I think that Mr. Vignolo has disgraced his office as the Ethics Board attorney. He needs to be removed immediately. And I'll just point out, the Ethics Board still doesn't have a website, still doesn't have an email address, still doesn't make it clear that they exist, or that you can file a complaint against any county employee or official with that board. They're not advertising it, it's not a coincidence. They don't want people to know that they exist. It's there not to enforce the ethics laws, but to shield the powerful from them. And that is effectively what they're doing. More eyeballs need to be on that board. And I'd like all the freeholders to come to that next meeting, June 13th, if you really want to see the board that is supposedly handling ethics for this way.
Thank you. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. I just wanted to echo Jessica and thank the Freeholder Board for taking, you know, for making it clear, for making a priority and clarity of the policy on immigration matters. It helps us on a local level develop our own policies, and it certainly makes us feel that we are acting as a collaborator. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion opposed by Fielder Tamara, second by Fielder Valente, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries there, motion from the chair. Motion by Fielder Valente, second by Fielder Tamara, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries there.